Okay, thank you, and now I'll call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Sammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan? Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing.
Okay, next up is approval of minutes of June 16th. Is there a motion?
Second.
It's been moved in a second. Any corrections, changes to be noted? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, petitions and communications, there's one for, two are for at the time of, and one is from Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, that they're still concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. Okay, there's no unfinished business, reports of standing committees, reports of special committees, anything, reports of officers. Libby Tyler's gonna give us an update on the Barnes Mobile Home Park, and then we'll have some public input on that. We're gonna have the report first, and then, well, let's hear what Libby has to say, and then have you speak, okay? Libby and Mike.
Did you want to start?
Sure. We're gonna tag-team this. The mayor asked me to interview all the households at Barnes Mobile Home Park, and I'm gonna give you a brief summary of what I found. She wanted me to ask the residents if they wanted to move or to stay, and if they have any obstacles to moving, so I was able to get ahold of all nine households, and a solid majority, six of nine, indicated that they really want to move, preferably by this fall at the latest. Of the six households wanting to move, in one form or another, former or another, most of them expressed the desire to, they just felt that the park is gonna close, and it's hanging over their heads, and they want to move on with their lives. Of the three households that indicated a desire to stay past the April 15th, 2005 closure deadline, clearly it was, in all or most of those cases, it was finances that were holding them back from what they felt from being able to move. As you know, the lot rent there is $215 a month, that includes water and garbage, so it's hard to find comparable housing so cheap. Of the households that expressed the desire to move, well, excuse me, two of the nine households, only two of them indicated a desire to move their mobile home. Most of them felt their mobile home just wasn't in good enough shape anymore to move, and that they would abandon it. Two of them with some of the newer homes that date to the early 80s indicated they were gonna look into moving. It's estimated that a move would cost, at least one estimate is about $3,000, $3,500 to move it. Of the households that indicated a desire to move, some said they wanted to rent a house, others wanted to purchase a house, or they wanted to move their mobile home. Some residents frankly haven't gotten too far in deciding what exactly they're gonna do, so I guess that's about it.
And just to supplement, we've got a good start. We have a city team that's working together, Mike, myself, Kelly Murkowski, and Randy Burgett, the team that will be working with the residents. We did start with a census of how many households we're working with, and some of the demographics there that's been completed, and Mike was able to complete interviews regarding their preferences, their housing preferences. We'll be pursuing an individual approach for the nine households. They all have different needs and situations, so there's not a one-size-fits-all in this case, so we'll be working with them individually. We'll also be working with a number of partners that we'll be reaching out to, for example, area realtors and apartment owners that might provide a suitable relocation for some of the residents, existing mobile home parks in the area that might have vacant lots that the mobile home units that can be moved can be moved to, Habitat for Humanity, which is an option for those seeking potential homeownership in the future. The Housing Authority does have provisions to provide preference in cases like this, and that might be an option for some of the residents, a very economical option for them. Also, City of Champaign has some programs that might be able to help these individuals as well. We will be, again, reaching out to the partners, working individually, and then letting the residents know what's going on by sending them a letter. There's been a lot of different, there's been a lot of different information. We want to assure them that we will be taking time to work with them individually, and provide them a point of contact as well, so that will be done very soon. And we understand that, as Mike alluded, some are really ready for a change, but some it may take quite some time for this relocation, and we understand that the city council will be patient, and we will work through the issues, and we certainly appreciate the funds that have been provided to help us with this tenant relocation issue.
We do have time, so are there questions for Mike and Libby? Okay, we'll start, we'll just go around the room. Start with Diane, how's that?
I have a question about the sales contract, which included supposedly some funds for assisting with relocation, but there was then confusion about that on the part of the park owner. Where are we with that?
Probably have Bill answer this. I know the contract provides for some clearance, which will be important, clearing the site and demolition, that type of thing.
The sales contract was to include purchase of the land, and included demolition of the home, which is currently vacant, and to help with any physical moving or relocating, or disposal of any abandoned trailers. There was never any discussion about financial assistance that the owners, the trustees, would have with the residents there.
Okay, so the contract dealt only with the structures?
The land purchase and any physical removal for a cleared site.
Okay, alright.
So that part was budgeted essentially, then?
Yes.
Okay.
There's an abandoned home on this site, as well as several of these homes may be demolished if people leave the homes behind.
Okay, and then Dennis, and then Carol.
Yeah, do you think that any solution will take more than a year to come to, so that if the city really did want to pursue the purchase of the property and complete that contract, we would actually have a clearance to go ahead?
That sounds like a contract question. I think that we will get very far in a year. I don't know, in terms of relocation, I don't know that we would be there, but I think that we will make quite great progress, and I don't know if there's a trigger point in a year that you had a question about, too?
Well, my understanding was that everything hinges upon about one year from now, being prepared to take the property over after whatever solution has come up, and I guess we can hold off on that, if necessary, until the solution is a solution. It sounds also like because of different needs, and everybody's gonna be working to achieve individual solutions, that there may be different amounts of funding needed for different solutions, and I just think it should be mentioned straight up that we're attempting to meet the needs of the people who are asking for different kinds of solutions, and each solution has a different price tag, so there shouldn't be necessarily, this is not a competition, this is actually an attempt to reach preferred solution in each case, and that the price tags may have different amounts attached to it. Is that what your understanding?
That's my belief, I agree.
Carol?
I just wanted to clarify on two. One, the original contract that we got on this purchase, it alluded to relocation in that contract. I'd like us to pull that and look at that again, because that was part of the original, once it came back to us from the tenant union, that was the argument, because otherwise we wouldn't be in this conversation otherwise. So the relocation piece is still questionable to me, because it appeared in the contract as if there was language that said they would help with relocation, so I'd like to see that. And then, secondly, Libby, is it your intention then to assign a staff member to help with physically each family, what you need, how do we get you where you need to go? Is that your intention to do that?
Yes, we have the team, as I mentioned, and I think we'll be looking to Randy Burgett to work directly with the households, along with the support of the others, and this is completely within the line of what he does, for the city has done for many years, working with households on home improvements and their needs.
Okay, okay.
And Charlie?
Do we, are we prepared for those families who wish to stay for the indefinite future? Are we prepared to accommodate that, or would we get to a point where we would say, "We will assist you to move, but you can't stay"?
I think that's a council, a mayor and council call down the road, is my, would be my thought, see how far we get over the next several months, and then that's a pretty important discussion point, I would think, for the mayor and council to have at that point.
The mayor has indicated a willingness possibly to let residents stay beyond April 15th, but I don't think we're at the point right now where we can know if that's feasible or not.
Okay, further questions? Dennis, did you have something?
I think he can come back to it, Charlie, even if...
You have another question, Carol?
No.
You gotta figure it out, Dennis, or...
Well, unfortunately, I didn't bring my two copies of the documents with me, but the original staff recommendations and overview document was one thing that we provided, and then there was the actual contract for the property, and the wording in that did not include specifics about the owner helping to relocate, even though that was the original concept, so the ultimate legal document omitted that clause. I believe that's what I recall from reading the documents, but I didn't bring my copy with me.
I would just mention, we were, excuse me, encouraged by the mayor, and I think by council members as well, to work with the residents, as maybe having their interests at this point in mind, to work with them carefully, and I think the thought was, it would be perhaps better to have the staff work with the residents than to rely entirely upon the owner. That's a sense that I got from the mayor and from others as well.
And I think that that solution is appropriate, because I have doubts about the surety of us relying upon the owner entirely.
I'm sorry, if I can just, I just wanted to speak back just for a second, because it is not, I think our solution certainly is a good one for the families, but I don't want it to appear as if we've either given this company more revenue than we should have to do a job that they're ultimately now not doing, if that was the original agreement. And if that wasn't, then I agree also with that position, too. If it, it's not normal that we would buy a property, and then the person who you bought it from say, "You also got to move this family." That's not normal, so I expect that that would be out of the ordinary in this case, and if it was misrepresented, or misstated, or in any way confused, then we also want to clear the record on that, that the city has not given this person additional revenue to help these families, and then they just didn't do it, right? So that's important for us to clear the record on, and make sure that that is clear, that the city is helping them, because we should be helping them, not necessarily, because they are not helping them, if you understand my point.
Bill?
Well, I can, to clear the record, I guess, there is no money given to the property owner to help with any kind of assistance to relocate the families, so that was never discussed prior to, nor in the development of, or in council's approval of the agreement. So if that clears the record, then that's the position.
Okay, Dennis?
Yeah, there was one more thing, and the kind of unusual part about this is that people who own these mobile homes, they own their home, but they don't own the land that's on, and that is, I mean, that really puts them in a different position than if we were buying individual lots in a property that had been subdivided, you know, nine times.
Which is why we're taking the extra steps that we're taking, so, okay. Any further questions for staff? And we have one person who wants to speak to this issue, and then we'll get to Carletta, who has also a, okay, so, thank you. Next up is Cynthia Green, 610 South Glover.
I don't even know how to present this. This is heartbreaking right now, what I'm hearing. Me and my husband are separated because of all this garbage that's going on. This is a home they worked hard for to purchase and bought. We were gonna put more money into it this summer, but instead, we did something different. We bought an automobile from my husband, go back and forth the work. The trailer's not gonna last another winter. It's not gonna last this winter at all, so you're telling us it's gonna take us more time to help us out? It'd be like, if I want to buy your land, and then I'm gonna tell you to get out of your house, and you own your home, wouldn't you want to be accommodated with, would you have put in your home? Wouldn't you? Right now, my husband left me. I am left with nothing now, but that mobile home. I can't even pay my rent right now, because I'm on a fixed income, and then you guys are gonna throw this all down our throats. We're tired of playing games. Now, when somebody purchases a land, and these are our homes, we own them, you have to buy something off of us. We just can't just leave it and be accommodated for something that we worked hard for, even though it's cheap at the time, and now you're telling me that I have to give up my animals, too? And I've already given up my husband, he left me, because we're under a lot of stress over this. I can't pay the rent, now I'm gonna be evicted, where am I gonna go? I know this is not your whole problem, but there's something that's got to be done, and it's got to be done soon. A lot of us are on disability, our health are not the greatest, we cannot move in the This has got to stop, this has got to end, and this has been going on since April.
Ms. Green, did, I assume you've spoken with Mr. Munson?
Yes, I did, and I stressed my feelings to him.
Okay, and I think, I think, yeah, so I think the timetable is now, you know, we're looking at a timetable that will address a lot of this by fall, right? Yeah, I think the issue is to try to accommodate people as quickly as staff can work with each of you to meet your needs. But, but you know, this is only July, we've just allocated the money in the current budget, so that part started, and so I think the next step is to meet with city staff, and they will get back to you, and once, the ball is now rolling, and they will make sure that this gets done, and as we've heard, six of nine families want to move by fall, and so I'm sure that we'll try to accommodate that.
We're still spinning our wheels, you're asking the same questions over and over and over again. We can't be any clearer what some of us want to do, and some of us don't want to do. I can't worry about everybody else.
City government, one thing that happens is that it, the wheels move very slowly. I know that they don't move fast enough to meet our individual needs many times, but I can assure you that city staff will address this issue and get moving on this as quickly as they can.
Ms. Green, I certainly sympathize with your position. One, because I understand it, and two, because today, it took me four, let me see, this is 2014, four years to get a young lady into an affordable housing program, that she was on a waiting list since 2010. So, four years.
I'm not...
I know you don't have four years, so...
No, I don't have four years.
And we won't do what was done in this last situation I just helped with today. What I'd like for you to do, because this is very difficult for us as a council, we couldn't sit here and say, "Okay, how much can you afford on rent? And how much is your food? And how much is your..." You understand, we can't do that from the council.
I understand what you're saying, and we're not asking for you to buy us a brand-new home.
Exactly. So what we need to do is to make sure that our staff is responsive to what your need is, your timetable, what you can afford, what program fits best for you. We gotta make sure that the case management portion of this, unfortunately, gets done with you directly. I appreciate you coming to the council, because it lets us know as elected people what we need to do policy-wise to prevent this kind of stuff in the future, but on the delivery side, right, on the side of making sure you got a house, making sure you're out in the wintertime, making sure you get somewhere safe, that's gonna have to be done off-camera. We can't do that from this standpoint, and our staff is committed, because I met with them this week, on this same, last week, on this same issue, to make sure that they were, A, following up, and they were, and B, that Libby, who was away, knows that we want a staff member to help all nine families. Whatever their specific needs are, they need to be addressed, each one will be different, but we have to make sure we do it offline, and get you guys settled before the wintertime. So it is a priority, and all of us as council members have, I'm sure every one of us has called individually about this particular Barnes Mobile Home family issue. We've all called, and so you can be reassured that we are not going to allow you to be there in the wintertime with inadequate housing, okay? Be assured.
Eric, did you want to add something?
I have nothing to really add to what Carol said. She was very eloquent, eloquent and right on target. We do have, in the new, in the budget for the fiscal year that's just begun, we will have money to assist you in, you know, in your relocation, and we will have staff attention to, you know, discuss that with you, and refer you, give you all the, you know, the right, refer you to the right resources, so I think, I mean, that's in place. We had to, you know, budget for this current fiscal year to do that, it wasn't in place in the fiscal year that ended June 30th, but the resources to do that are in place now, so I guess I would just recommend that you, you know, work with our staff and let them help you.
And I've answered every question that has been asked, and I've told them the same thing. I got to get, my marriage is on the rise, I ain't even been married a year.
Charlie? Oh, Dennis?
Yeah, and when there was a discussion at the Lincoln Square Mall, and we had Esther Pat helping talk to the assistant mobile home owners, there were also representatives from the Illinois Mobile Home Association present, who offered resources, and I've forwarded that information and their contacts to Mike Munson, who is coordinating this for the mayor. So I want you to know that the Mobile Home Association of Illinois has resources that they are, they think that may be of use to us as we solve the problems, and if it's possible to move your home, if that's what you want, it's possible that we will be able to help with that. So each individual case will be handled slightly differently, you have to let the process work itself through. I would expect that you'd be able to make that move, conditions being favorable by fall, and the city's certainly not going to be evicting anybody from their property for lack of being able to solve a problem in the next couple of months.
Okay, and I've spoken with staff, and here's a rough timetable for you. Sometime this week, you'll get a letter from the city, addressing some of the individual questions that you've raised, and then there'll be a follow-up with staff next week, following week, so within the next two weeks, you'll get notification, you'll get some communication with the city, and then a follow-up personal meeting with probably Randy Burgett, that was mentioned earlier, to start addressing your needs. So hopefully, within the next two weeks, you'll see some real action, okay?
I hope so, because it's hurting me that I miss him, and I might be evicted, because...
You're not gonna be evicted.
But you guys don't know Sandy's.
Yeah, well...
And the people that own the mobile home park, you don't know them.
Okay.
$10 a day late, I have to pay until I get money again, and it's getting ridiculous. On top of the $215.
Okay. Any further questions? Thank you very much.
I would just like to suggest that if you need that kind of assistance, you should go and talk to the Cunningham Township.
I can't, because the trailer's not in my name, it's in my husband's name, and I've already tried that.
Okay. If I think of another, I'll let you know.
That should not be a factor, because the, it gets community property state, so if you're married, you technically own the home.
Well, according to Booker, the Booker Building, is that on Washington?
No, no, you should, you should, you should have a conversation with Michelle Mayall, who was here earlier.
Oh, okay.
Okay, please stop at the township office, please stop and see...
I'm not from here, so I don't know where it's at.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, so it's right, it's the brick building right across from the library.
Okay.
Okay, right over here on Green Street. Okay, is it two, what's the number? Two, it's right across the library, it's 200 block, 200 West Block of Green Street.
Okay.
So it's right over here.
Okay.
Okay, so you should stop and see Michelle and her staff, and they have some, yes, they have emergency assistance funds, and that's your, that should be your next stop.
Thank you.
And then staff will follow up with you this week and next.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we have one more staff report, and then Carletta Donaldson.
Brandon Boyes sent out an economic development report, and I just would like to highlight some items on that. We have another tenant moving into the County Plaza Building, known as Efficient Living Illinois, and also have at least one of the curbanas open in front of Crane Alley, so that's been completed, stop by and check that out. Just adjacent to that, Era Records has opened, and along with Farm League Skate Shop, this is on Main Street, adjacent to Crane Alley, and they will have a joint ribbon cutting July 11th at noon, 123 West Main Street. The new Wendy's is just about completed, they're putting the finishing touches on that, that's at the Five Points, or the Gateway Shops, and also a demolition permit and site preparation has begun on Campus Circle Apartment Complex, so that real estate is closed, and they have been issued their building permit for their construction of that long-awaited project on University Avenue. Any questions?
Diane?
Yes, I was glad to see the curbana's completed. I wondered if you knew of the timetable for when they'll actually be furnished. At this point, there were no tables or chairs on them yet, and I understand it's the business's responsibility. Kind of anxious to see them used.
Yes, and they pay for the privilege, so hopefully they'll be getting the furniture out there quickly, but I will have to check with staff on the timetable.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, Carlotta Donaldson, 406 Brookton Drive.
Thank you. It's Carlotta Donaldson, 406 Brookton Drive, Urbana. And those who wish can join me in a moment of silence, please. Thanks. And I sent an email, and I'm sure a lot of you may know, it's been in the DI and in the News Gazette. Just keep in mind the family of Ashley Walls, who's a graduate student here, and I'm sure that, I know there was another student as well, keep his family in your thoughts as well. But for those who wish to know, there will be a public ceremony this Saturday at 7:25 West Roosevelt Road, that's the UIC Forum in Chicago, at noon, and a reception following afterwards at 2 o'clock. And that's for those who are interested. I took the last two Mondays also to do exactly what was suggested, and that was to observe moments of silence in my home. And I came up with one thing that has really gotten me through these last few weeks, and that's the Serenity Prayer. And it states, "Lord, grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, the courage to change the things I can change, and the wisdom to know the difference." So I just wanted to share that with you. Now, my thoughts today, at first, I wasn't going to speak, and then when I decided to speak, I had a few concerns with the Community Economic Development Department, but then I was welcomed by someone here at the podium, and that's Max. Welcome, Max. I was in a class, Dr. Stacey Harwood's Urban Planning Class this past semester, and I met Max, so I do welcome him to Libby's department. And I think, I think that maybe some of my thoughts have been answered. I echoed a lot in our class, that so many times, our students do a lot of things in champagne, so I'm glad they're our students. I think Josh also worked with you, Libby, as well. I was in a class with Josh as well, and so I do thank you for that. I was also beginning to wonder, because I know that Dennis Roberts, you're the representative for the Barnes Mobile Park people, so I commend you and thank you for your thoughts and comments to them this evening. But one thing I believe that we're forgetting is how this even all came to be. I know when talks and contracts were being drawn up, the city, and I'm not sure which staff was involved or who was actually involved, but that needs to, we need to make sure that that never happens again, that something is brought to the city council, it's moved through the committee and then brought to the city council meeting without full information. I'm sure the city knew, or whoever signed the contract or negotiated this contract, knew that there was property on there, on that Barnes Mobile site. And so here we are at this point. I know that you're going to do, and I trust that you're going to do, what you're saying and explaining and telling these people, but I see four of the nine families discussed, and I don't know what each individual concerns are. So I do thank you, again, Dennis Roberts, for, for having that also on your radar screen. But we do need to keep in mind that what happened with this, as far as the council voting it through and then approving it at the city council meeting, that that does not happen again without full information. And then if I could, just leave you with one last thought, and in your leisure, and for those who do wish to do so, but another scripture that comes to mind for me to make Migo get through, and that's Philippians 4, verses 6 through 8. Thanks for listening.
Okay, we're on to new business. First up is ordinance 2014-763, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, fiscal year 2014-15, consolidated social service funding. We'll get a report from Kelly.
Evening. For you is an ordinance revising the budget ordinance specifically with regard to the social service funding. This ordinance proposes to amend the annual budget for fiscal year 1415 to update the amount of funding that was allocated for each social service agency that have had applied for and received funding. The amounts shown in the memo are last year's amounts. Finance had budgeted the higher amount of $195,000 versus $190,000 for City General Fund. Staff realized too late this had occurred, so this memo corrects this error. So the original amount was $195,000, of which $50,000 was allocated to emergency relocation, which left $145,000 for social service funding, and $140,000 was allocated, leaving $5,000. Also, on July 2nd, the city received notification from Family Service that due to a loss of funding from several of their primary funders, first call for help program would be closing on July 18th. So as a result, they said they were declining their grant award. So the $5,000 plus first call for helps amount are shown as unallocated in the ordinance. So staff is recommending that council approve the budget revision ordinance.
Carol?
I'd like to actually make a motion to send this to the committee of the whole. I'd like to see actually a reallocation of the remaining balance of $7,400 be included in this approval before it's approved at the council level.
Second. And for clarification, for clarification on that, Carol, do you mean to proportionally reallocate it across the...
Yes, I'd like to, those who are not funded, I think a few of them, and I don't have it in front of me right at this moment, but those who are not funded at 100%, any of those remaining organizations, we'd like to reallocate the $7,400 back across there.
And share it across those that weren't at 100. Okay, gotcha. Does that make sense, Kelly?
I think so. Call me if you...
And, yeah, and hopefully, it won't take a whole lot next week. Okay, any, any further questions for, we have a motion, but we also have somebody who wants to speak to this issue too. So any further questions for Kelly? Dennis?
Actually, I had a question for Carol.
Oh, please.
All right. And so your interest would be to share the allocation broadly rather than a specific new organization?
Yeah, see, the problem clarified today is that if a program, who could be a great program in the community, if they did not apply during this social service funding allocation, we can't give them the money because we have it. We have to work with the programs that we have that did apply, and those who are qualified currently to receive funding from the State of Urbana. So in, in the event that they didn't apply, unfortunately, we can't just add them to the mix. We do have to work with the ones who did, and we have Urbana Neighborhood Connections who's doing youth programming. So some of those programs that maybe didn't get 100%, we can, we can up their ante a little bit.
Eric?
So I'll, I'll just, you know, say for the record, I think everybody up here understands, but just so everybody in the public understands, that actually, our resources, our, our, the average funding level for the people we, who, whom we did fund was a little bit less than 50% of the request. So we, we had, we had about twice as much proposal pressure for programs that, that we judge to be worthy of funding, and, and they are worthy of funding. We had about twice as much proposal pressure as we had resources. So there, there are, the, the reallocating funds in the way that Carol suggests would, in my opinion, be definitely money well-spent for the benefit of the city.
Okay.
I also did want to say that if you had any questions or anything, to direct them to me, as Janelle Hardy is leaving the city for a position with the U of I. So her last day is this Thursday. So, yeah.
We are the perpetual training ground. Reverend, Reverend Dr. Underwood, would you like to speak at this time?
Yes, and I don't want to take all my time saying who I am. He's already said who I am. Yes, I did. I was concerned, and I did speak to Mrs. Ammons about the $7,400 reallocation. And I had someone in mind, some organization, given the emergencies going on in the community, and I don't want to take time, everybody knows what's been going on in the community with the ceasefire and access, and the two churches, one being our church, trying to work with folk. And I don't want to take my time, you might talk about that. And then I want to talk to Mr. Jacobson, because he's the one who's been working with the social services agencies, and he probably knows about the ones with the jobs and, and with the young folk, teen programs that, with that $7,400, it would be very, very helpful to school starts to get the folk, the young people off the streets. And given our church is one of the churches, for the last two weeks, been from three to six, they had professionals talking with the young folk, but I've been seeing a lot of young folks in the street that would be good to get them off the streets. So I don't want to take too much time, but I was saying that, you know, you've been working with the figures and the people. I think you've been working with this young lady and...
I, I should say that, that I was really, I mean, I voted my priorities, but everybody on the council and the mayor voted their priorities for social service funding. So at the end of the day, I really just did mathematics.
Put them together, but anyway...
I just put them together. So, so this was very much a collective, you know, priorities that are reflected here. Were really our, our collective priorities.
Well, so I don't know, but I'm saying that given what's been going on, I wanted to do something with that $7,400, and given the emergencies that's been going on in the community, I had some ideas on, and so I spoke to you, Sister Carol, and you can speak to your colleagues about what I've said.
Yeah, I, I did check to see, because it's, it's, unfortunately, there obviously are community needs that we want to fulfill, but under the process of the current social service funding, if one of my favorite programs had applied this year and didn't get funded, then we could have said, "Oh, no, Kelly, we want to fund this program and get council support." But we don't have a method by which to say, "We got $7,400, let's give it to spin the wheel." You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, but what I was saying that, you know, everybody saw on television and in the paper, this, you know, what they're doing, you know, stop the gangs and stop this. Couldn't we give this in the emergency situation, but you explained...
Right, if we had a program that had submitted to us, then yes would be the answer.
But they thought that they were going to get some funds, you know, outside, you know, and it didn't happen, so they just took a little money to do something. If we could give them a little bit more money, maybe for the next month, they could work with some of these young people. Those were my ideas, because I saw a lot of people in the street, you know, so this was my idea. You know, when I saw that $7,400, when I was looking...
I do, I understand. We say we can spin it another way.
Let's, let's move on here then.
But I understand.
Okay, but did I take my three minutes?
Yeah, now, do you want to, do you want to address the other issue too while you're up here?
No, because it's not time.
Okay.
I wanted to hear what she had to say.
Okay, you'll save a couple of minutes for that, okay.
No, I've got three minutes. I've got my three minutes. It's not related to that.
Yeah, okay.
Any further discussion on sending this back to committee? With the request of Kelly? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, so this goes back to committee. Thanks, Kelly. Okay, and next up is ordinance 2014-764, an ordinance approving a major variance to allow encroachment of shade awning into required front yard of a city's, in the city's, B... Okay, that's probably, I think, B2, right? So there's a typo here. In the city's B1 or B2, Neighborhood Business Arterial District at 804 and 1/2?
B2.
B2, yeah, there's a typo there, B2. So it's ZBA case 2014 MAJ2. Libby?
Well, I'd like to introduce Maximilian Mahalik, who is working with us this summer as a planning intern.
Hi.
Well-known in the community, and Maximilian is a master's student in urban planning at the university, and he's been a great help to us in working on all the different needs that we have for planners, including a plant case. And so this is his presentation to the city council, and he's bringing this all the way through from Zoning Board of Appeals.
Do we give you a grade at the end?
We'll see. All right, thank you, and thank you, Libby.
Okay.
Now, the applicant is Faller Custom Builders, let me adjust this here, and they are requesting a major variance to install a shade awning at 804 and 1/2 East Main Street. The property is zone B2, Neighborhood Business Arterial District, and it carries a requirement of a 15-foot front yard. The proposed shade awning would encroach eight feet, 10 inches into that required yard, which is a 58.89% reduction in the front yard setback requirement. The ZBA voted on June 25th, 4 to 0, to recommend approval of the variance. On the condition that the shade awning is built according to the plans provided by the applicant, which will be seen later in Exhibit D, staff recommends the same. So as you can see in these photos here, the subject property is home to a beauty salon, and it is that structure on the left. And it is also home to a residential apartment, which is tucked in the behind, the rear portion of the structure. So you can't really see it in this photo, but it is up there. And now moving to Exhibit A. The subject property is defined by these hash marks, and we can see that it is surrounded by a variety of land uses. Immediately to the west is the Rock of Deliverance Church, while to the east, and sharing a wall with the subject property, is Ray's Air Conditioning and Heating Shop. To the north and south, one finds single-family homes. Similarly, in Exhibit B, we see that the subject property is surrounded by a range of zoning classifications, including neighborhood business, general business, and R3 single and two-family homes. The subject property currently encroaches seven feet, four inches into the required front yard, and is also fronted by a brick wall. This footprint has not been modified since 1915. Now, moving to Exhibit D. One moment. Here we see the plans for the proposed shade awning. It would be 15 feet long by four feet deep by four feet tall. And noting that Section 6-5.B.6 of the Urbana zoning ordinance allows awnings to encroach into a required front yard by two feet, six inches. It is determined that the awning proposed here would further encroach into the required yard by eight feet, 10 inches, leaving a front yard of three feet, eight inches. Moving back to Exhibit C. Here we see that the Urbana Comprehensive Plan calls for the area surrounding the subject property to be defined by a residential urban pattern, which itself calls for a pedestrian-oriented environment. And zooming in on the portion of East Main Street that we are focusing on, we see that the Comprehensive Plan encourages neighborhood businesses that will serve the local community. Heading down to Exhibit E. We see that the proposed awning is half the width of an existing canopy that fronts a neighboring property, and that neighboring property is right to the east, and that's 806 East Main Street. And that canopy was built prior to 1945. Moreover, in Exhibit F, we see both properties next to each other, with the subject property again on the left. And we can see here that the proposed shade awning would improve cohesion between these two structures, as both of them would then have a shade awning, or also known as a canopy. And in Exhibit F, which is this one, we also see that the proposed shade awning would lend to the historic character of the neighborhood, as awnings are often associated with historic districts. Moving down to Exhibit G, we see a written communication supporting the idea that the proposed awning will improve the pedestrian atmosphere of the neighborhood, speaking to the bull, speaking to the goals of the Urbana Comprehensive Plan. Furthermore, the applicant has stated over the phone that the awning will provide comfort for the customers of the beauty salon, and also wrote on the application that the proposed awning will improve the aesthetic value of the subject property. Now, moving on to the R5 variance criteria. This variance will not serve as a special privilege, as the structure was developed in 1915 and currently allows for no room for an awning without a variance. Moreover, the structure next door is already fronted by a canopy. Secondly, the need for the variance was not knowingly created by the petitioner as the subject property was developed prior to 1915. Thirdly, the variance will not change the character of the neighborhood, as the awning will improve the pedestrian atmosphere and lend to the area's historic character. Fourthly, the awning will not be a nuisance to neighboring properties, as the Rock of Deliverance Church is set back roughly 51 feet from the public right-of-way, and Ray's Air Conditioning and Heating Shop, which is located to the east, is fronted by its own canopy. Lastly, the variance represents the minimum deviation needed for the proposed awning to be installed. Now, the city council has three options regarding this matter. You could approve the variance as requested, approve it with certain conditions, or deny the variance. If you approve the variance with conditions, I would ask that you please articulate those conditions. A draft ordinance is attached for your review, and I'm free to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Maximilian, Dennis?
Yeah, I'll have, I'll save the comments about, general, general comments for a little bit later, but the, the awning that's proposed has the, if there's a question about putting lettering on the awning so that it might become a sign, will that then require an additional... lettering on the awning so that it might become a sign, will that then require an additional permit from the city? Because then we're talking about not an awning, but a sign. And when is, when do the two become the same thing?
Well, the variance tonight is about the encroachment. And if they wish to place a sign on it, then it needs to comply with our sign ordinance provisions. They've indicated, however, that that is not the intent. It's merely for the shade, not for a sign.
That is an advertisement for the business itself.
Carol.
On the exhibit, basically, the awning that you are, they're proposing would not exceed the awning to the right, the building to the right, so 806.
Correct.
It would be basically to the same area.
Sorry. It would be, correct, it would be half the width of the awning, of the awning that is to the right.
Okay, I see.
I know my artistic representation here might be...
It's a little challenging, but, oh, I'm sorry, if I can just follow more quickly. The brick enclosure, I'm not sure what that is in front of this, will it remain?
Yes, that is a one-foot-wide brick wall, and that was built with the original building prior to 1915.
Okay.
And for that portion of the front yard where that is that brick wall, the front yard would be two feet 8 inches versus three feet 8 inches.
I see.
Eric.
And on top of everything else, it will also reduce the city's carbon footprint, because it's going to shade that south-facing window and reduce the air conditioning load. So, good on.
Okay, Diane.
I move approval of ordinance 2014-07-064.
Moved by Diane, seconded by Carol. Okay, so any other questions of Maximilian here?
I love Maximilian's name.
Thank you.
It's a cool name.
And A+.
Yes.
That's only if the ordinance passes unanimously. So Dennis has some comments here.
Yeah. As you see in the information that was provided by Maximilian, we did get a letter from one of the presidents who supports the idea of the awning. Nobody that, I posted this on the HUNA website, nobody really contacted me forward against. Actually, I think I got a verbal comment that they thought was a good idea from another neighbor. I don't have any personal negative feeling about it at all. It probably will enhance this building. The only thing that we don't know is whether it's a Royer-designed building or not.
What, you don't know?
However, I sort of doubt it from the looks. But it does remind me an awful lot of what the Rose Bowl, the Rose Bowl Tavern, which once was a Royer-designed post office, our first post office in town.
It looks like a post office.
But the front of the current Rose Bowl, which looks like this, is a later addition, which probably really mucked up the original facade of that building when Royer designed it. So that's really a moot point, and has nothing to do with this. And I'm just mentioning it because any old building that comes from the 19, early 1900s is a historic building in our community. And these are rather unique buildings, this and the Rose, the, oh, I just forgot the name of it, but the Country Rose, or whatever it's called, Real Cell Shop.
Yeah, there, yeah, okay.
Is secondhand rose, is another, one of the few remaining examples of buildings that were built at the turn of the century that still look like businesses and have that old-fashioned business kind of appearance in a neighborhood business structure. So this, the patio that's in front of it, the brick wall, is a rather unique and strange aspect of the building. I don't have the history of this building. I'd be curious to find out what the original use was. And I'll probably try to work on that myself. But the awning is something that also can be detached, should we find that, you know, there's some reason to consider that in the future. So I have no objection.
Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smye?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Maximilian. I guess you get your A+.
Thank you.
Next up is Resolution 2014-736R, Resolution approving a supportive housing subrecipient agreement with Courage Connection, formerly of the Center for Women in Transition. Kelly Murkowski again.
Yes, before you use the resolution approving a subrecipient agreement for fiscal year 1415 with Courage Connection, formerly of the Center for Women in Transition, who participates in the supportive housing program, Homeless Families in Transition. The city has had this grant since fiscal year 95, 96. Funds were initially given to Salvation Army Center for Women in Transition and Women's Fund. Since that, those years, the city has applied every year through the NOFA or Notice of Funding Availability Process. On November of last year, HUD issued the 2013 NOFA, announcing funds were available for certain eligible programs, and that also a 5% reduction of annual renewal amounts should take place. The Continuum of Care voted to reduce the funds that the city received by a little over $33,000. And based on criteria set forth by the continuum, Salvation Army's funding was eliminated, and Courage Connection received a reduction in their allocation. The city submitted an application in January of this year and received notice last month in June that the application had been approved. The city executed the agreement with HUD, and then the city is required by HUD to execute a subrecipient agreement with the agency, which would be Courage Connection. The Urbana Community Development Commission, at its June 24th meeting, forwarded the resolution with a unanimous recommendation for approval.
Questions for Kelly. Seeing none, we'll take the last bit of public input here. Reverend Underwood?
You stated that, oh, I guess I did. Yeah, I had a question regarding the fact that it was $200,619,000 last year, and they reduced it to $166,720. Was that that 5% of reduction? Is that the 5% reduction?
I think Kelly can answer that here. Yeah.
Yes, that, those amounts came from HUD, as far as what the annual renewal amount. So...
I read the whole thing. I'm just asking. You know, I read the whole thing, but I just didn't understand why they were reducing that amount.
Because HUD notified that nationally, the, some of the homeless programs would be, have to be reduced by 5%.
But the continuum, the continuum of care, was that the reason that the board...
No, the reason is because of Congress. And they are the ones who allocate to Department of Housing and Urban Development. And therefore, on a national level, there was a 5% cut for renewals. And then they notified, HUD did, notified all the continuum of cares in the country, that they would have to look at their renewal, and it would have to make a 5% cut.
Okay, okay. Okay, I hear what you're saying. But I read it differently. So I just asked that question, since when I read all of that, I read it differently than what you're saying. So I asked a question. What is the oversight by the council once this is approved? What is the oversight by the council once this is approved? As the, what is the oversight by the council? I'm asking the city council, what is oversight?
Yeah, Kelly, we get reports, right, from the agency?
Yes.
Quarterly or annual?
I believe it's quarterly. And we also monitor agencies
Okay.
to make sure that they are following regulations and guidelines that are required of them.
They have to meet, they have to meet the federal housing and urban development standards, and the continuum of care issues, and all of that. So, and I think...
Because my understanding is the continuum of care is a board made up of nonprofits and social services agencies that have an interest in homelessness locally. That's a local board.
In addition, also...
And it's been in operation since 19, about 15 years locally. And they do a lot of the scoring and all for all of them. And they are one of the responsible parties why the Salvation Army was not funded, the way I read it when I...
Well, the regulations that govern the continuum of care that come from HUD recently have been revised. It used to be the McKinney-Vento Act, and now it's the Hearth Act. And with that, with that, more responsibilities have been placed on continuums of care, not only social service agencies, but municipalities, the county. There's a lot of interested parties and others that maybe get funding and those that don't get funding from HUD, that are all meet together in the continuum.
So the new person, the MBA person that's been hired, so what would be her role? The new person with the MBA that was hired, would she have a role in this?
I'm not sure who you're talking about.
I just clicked on it. I just clicked on and read it.
The new director of the Center for Women in Transition. Oh, um, yes, she, well, she's the director for the agency. And we give funding, we administer their program through this, this program.
So her role is to make sure that the program follows the guidelines and writes the reports that come back to...
So you read it too?
Which piece? The...
I mean, when you click on, you just read the information, yeah. And so she's a new hire, to the direct, the new woman in transition, which the name has not been changed. And they have a new person with the MBA that will be directing the program. I was just, so...
Right. Well, they are the ones who make the decision as far as hiring their staff.
So what is the oversight by the council once this is approved? And you said you just receive reports quarterly?
Right. We do not hire, I mean, they are the ones who hire their staff.
Okay, my concern is, I guess my concern is about the homeless, you know, what we've been doing, a lot of things locally. I know this is just one, this is just one, the subrecipient agreement. This is just one agreement. But the whole homeless thing recently has been growing. You know, in working with the schools, we've seen so many young people who are homeless, you know, families. And I was just, this is just one thing. And I just, using this as one way to see how can we have fewer homeless people. And in reading all the information just this one time, and seeing the cuts and all, and then the women, the Center for Women in Transition, and then the requirements, what HUD is doing, and... Your time is up, Ms. Underwood. Okay.
Yeah, I would suggest you take that up with your congressman, Carol.
Wait a minute, excuse me, excuse me. Don't be flippant.
No, I'm not, I'm not being flippant. I think this is an issue that needs to be raised with Congress. I'm serious. They are cutting our funds. Yeah.
I'd like to speak to both of those things. I understood where you were going. One is Esat Griffith is the new director of Courage Connection now. That used to be CWT. I trained her. She worked under me as an AmeriCorps. She is a top-flight person who's going to make sure that the HUD regulations are followed, and that everything that's supposed to be submitted is submitted. And I know it's hard in agency stuff to meet all those regulations, but she is absolutely one who will make sure that gets done. The other thing is that the federal level is, they cut our AmeriCorps program, which is why we didn't have another program to train more people to do these programs, which is a federal issue that we need to talk to these folks that's going to DC to make sure that we get the resources in our community to address the homeless need that is growing, because people are losing their jobs. You know, they don't, we saw this tonight. So we see a growing need with less resources, and so we have to be very vigilant, as you are at these council meetings. And then I'll just say that I'm hoping, I'm sad Janelle is leaving, because Janelle was absolutely on top of what was going on in the City of Urbana, to make sure that our side is protected. The council don't directly oversee any of the programs, because of course, the role of the council is separate and administrative as far as policy. But our staff members have to be very diligent in making sure that the money that the City of Urbana is responsible for is going to the needs of those families. And that is our objective, I think. And I think that's Kelly's objective, and whoever comes after Janelle, I'm certain will make sure that that's their objective as well.
But look what the commission, the questions they ask. They weren't sure. Look at the commission.
Which commission you speaking to?
The commission that recommended to you. Look at the minutes. I read the minutes.
Okay, Diane.
Yeah, I just wanted to address one of your concerns. I believe that a staff member also sits on the continuum, Continuum of Care Board, representing the City of Urbana. So that is direct oversight from the City of Urbana on that board. And the minutes, and I want to thank whoever wrote, kept minutes from this meeting, because this issue was one of those things where the first thing I turned to is the minutes from the CD Commission meeting, because the commissioners did ask a lot of the same questions that you did. And it was explained, the issues with the Salvation Army, and it had to do with their ability to actually spend the funds in a timely manner, and they weren't making deadlines. And I think we found the same thing with one of our grants that we gave them last year or the year before. So, so a lot of your questions were also asked by the commissioners, and I find that very valuable in considering this issue. But anyway, it's in, yeah, the minutes are really helpful for anyone who wants to read that.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion?
A second.
I'll second.
Moved by Carol, seconded by Diane. Further discussion of the, of the resolution approving this. Okay, this is a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Last up is a zoning board of appeals, Joanne Chester, term to expire June 30, 2019. I guess this was left off the list last week.
Move approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Diane, seconded by Dennis. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that appointment's approved. Seeing no further business, this meeting's adjourned.